Mr. Satch, you want to speak?
No, that's all right. I got two things for you.
Okay. Mr. Darby, how are you, sir?
I'm fine, sir.
He said he might be just 15 minutes late. He's here, but he's on a body of study.
Okay. Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to our public hearing notices where we have four of them on the agenda. So I'm going to turn this portion over to our clerk. Madam Clerk?
Notice is hereby given that Charleston County Council will hold a public hearing regarding an ordinance amending the Charleston County procurement ordinance as amended Division One, General Division Two, Organization Division Three Source Selection and Contract Formation, Division Five Construction, Architect Engineer and Land Surveying Services, Division Eight Intergovernmental Relations, Division Nine Small Business Enterprise Program, and Division Eleven Local Preference Option.
All right. Did anybody sign up to speak? Okay, any council members? Okay, we move on to the next one.
Notice is hereby given that Charleston County Council will hold a public hearing regarding a request to designate the Ten Mile community as a historic district on the Charleston County Historic Designation List.
Okay. Anybody sign up to speak? Okay, how many we got to speak?
Eight.
Okay, we got eight people to speak. Is there a president, somebody that speaks for that community? All right, who is that person? Would you stand up, please? So, you know, this is your call. Instead of having eight different people come up and speak for two or three minutes at a time, do they want to defer all their time to you, or do they want to come up individually? All right, let's call the first one, like your name and address, and we give you up to two, maybe three minutes.
All right, the first person is Edward Pinkney Jr., followed by Justin Schwabler.
My name is Edward Pinkney. I live at 3768 Robbie Glover Road, Owandaw, South Carolina, 29429. I stand to support the Ten Mile District. This district has been, was founded in the 1880s. It's part of the Beehive Plantation. It has a very rich cultural heritage. Starting from that time, we have doctors, lawyers, artists who are featured in the Smithsonian, and people you see every day in Boone Hall Plantation. And one of the things we want to do is preserve our culture. Some of the sweetgrass baskets that you see that become integral to Charleston are part of the culture and why the people in the community are so important. If this is lost, a good part of the culture of Charleston is lost with it. In support of this initiative, we have about 400 letters that we've gathered to support this initiative, and many of our members have driven over an hour to come speak so that you would see them. While they won't speak with you tonight, they would at least like the opportunity to stand so you can recognize them, if that's all right.
All those in favor, would you please stand?
All those in favor of Ten Mile?
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Good evening. My name is Justin Schwabler. I'm with the Charleston Foundation. I'm just here to speak in support of the Ten Mile community and ask that the council recognize the hard work that this community has put forth to help create this district. Again, this is potentially the third settlement community historic district after Bee Field, assuming that they get a positive third reading. So we just want to be here in support of the Ten Mile community. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next person's Wendy Lockhart, followed by Thomas Tisdale Jr.
I am Wendy Lockhart. I live at 1404 Chandler Road, and I just wanted to voice my support of this community. We've been in the community a little over 10 years now and love what we have as a community and been embraced by our neighbors, and we develop friendships and family, and I just want you to be aware of that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Thomas Tisdale Jr. My parents are on the way, but my parents are Thomas Tisdale Senior and Kari Tisdale. They live at 935 Gatsenville Road. I live at 211 Sixth Avenue, Mount Pleasant, South Carolina. Our family wants to formally withdraw our names from the Ten Mile Historic Designation. And we want to put that on the record. Thank you.
Next person is Carla Pinkney and Robin Moses.
On behalf of the Ten Mile community, I'd like to explain why this community should be granted the Historic Preservation District status.
Ms. Carla, would you give your address for us?
Oh, I'm sorry. Carla Pinkney, 3768 Robbie Glover Road, Owandaw, South Carolina.
Thank you.
On behalf of the community, I'd like to explain why this community should be granted the Historic District status. First, in September of 2016, the New South Associates delivered the Charleston County Historic Resource Survey update to Charleston County Zoning and Planning Department, identifying Ten Mile as significant due to the presence of so many historic Gullah Beachy communities in unincorporated Charleston County. In October of 2019, the Charleston County Comprehensive Plan was adopted by the Charleston County Council as Ordinance 2034. As a part of 2013-2014 five-year review, the former residential special management future land use designation was replaced by the Urban Suburban Area Cultural Community Protection. This was intended to protect and promote the culture and unique development patterns of African-American communities in the urban suburban area. If we do not act now, there will no longer be a Ten Mile community in the future due to aggressiveness of developers and the threat of people who've lived in there for generations being forced out due to future increases in taxes and high concentrations of excessively expensive homes within the community, some starting at $900,000. In addition, the majority of the community, specifically the portion south of Highway 17, was formerly the Beehive Plantation, and based on the 1881 plat that we submitted as part of our application, the southern portion of the community still has the same boundaries today, less the areas that have been annexed into the town of Mount Pleasant. Thus, the property that was previously mentioned was located within the boundaries. It's important for the community to be preserved as a preservation district. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Robin Moses, and then Erin Minnigan.
Good evening. My name is Robin Moses. I live at 1125 Chandler Road in Owandaw. I am the fourth generation to live on the land there in the community. It's been in my family for over 100 years. I'm going to share with you a little something that many don't know about that community. The Ten Mile community has been diverse for a very long time. My great-grandparents were from, my grandfather, great-grandfather was from Syria, my great-grandmother was from France. They left their prospective countries because of civil war. They met in Lebanon, which was a safe, neutral country. From there, they came to the United States, and they settled in the Ten Mile community. At that point, where I live now was where my grandfather's family settled. My grandmother and them lived across the river. They took the boat over to the boat landing, caught the mule and buggy school bus, picked up the kids along Chandler Road and 17, and went to the big yellow schoolhouse. That's where my grandparents met. That's my grandparents. And the rest is history. We have been there on that piece of property. I plan on staying there. My grandfather was a great fisherman, spent many years in the Wando River. He shared his bounty from the river with the folks in the Ten Mile community. We also had a large garden every year growing up. So now to carry that on, my husband and I live there, we have a large garden. We're teaching our grandchildren how to grow things, and with that, even though it's not a community garden, it will be shared with our friends and neighbors. So we must preserve the history in our communities somehow, some way, by talking about where we came from.
Thank you, ma'am. When you start sharing that garden, give me a call.
You my address, it's on record.
Next.
Erin Minnigan, and then the last person is Monique Allen.
And I'm going to allow the president, Ms. Askew, she just came in a little late because of traffic, to speak after the last person. I want to give Ms. Pearl a chance to speak. Go ahead, ma'am.
Thank you. Erin Minnigan with the Preservation Society of Charleston. The Ten Mile community has an extensive, rich history that contributes to the cultural heritage of Charleston County. Across the region, settlement communities are under pressure from suburban growth and development, and Ten Mile is no exception. This important designation will help preserve land use patterns inherent to the community's identity for future generations. It's encouraging that the 2016 Historic Resources Survey update identify Ten Mile as a significant historic African-American settlement community, and that the Charleston County Comprehensive Plan recommends the majority of land in the proposed district for urban suburban cultural community protection future land use, recognizing that any future development should be compatible with the existing development patterns to help sustain the community's sense of place. We are pleased to lend our support for the Historic District Designation of Ten Mile, and our hopeful additional research and documentation can be conducted in accordance with the recommendations of the 2016 survey to help support the significance of this historic community. Thank you.
Thank you. And who we have before Ms. Pearl? That's...
Monique Allen.
There's Monique Allen here. You come right up, Ms. Allen, and Ms. Pearl will be the last.
Hello. Good evening, everybody, and my name is Monique Allen. I am here representing my father, Mr. Eddie Brown, of the Ten Mile community. I really don't have a lot to say. My father has been, he's, we have all been a part of the community forever. My father has been a part of that community for 89 years. Before that, we have family members that have been a part of that community for 90 years, 100 years. I just, me personally, I love it. If this is going to benefit the community, I am all for it, and the only thing I am asking is, what would be the benefits of this rezoning, and are there any, is there anything that would affect the community with the rezoning? That's the only thing I have.
All right.
Good evening.
You can pull that up if you want to.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Pearl V. Askew, 977 Gatsenville Road, Owandaw. Thank you, council persons, along with Charleston County planning staff and all of their personnel. We really appreciate all that, the help that you've given us in getting this process to this point. They've worked very closely with the community, and we have carved out areas that choose not to be a part. I want to say thank you again to all of those who came, and we appreciate each and every one of you considering this process. Thank you.
So, let me ask you a question. So you said you carved out those that doesn't want to be an historic district? You're going to allow them to...
For instance, example, two, am I correct? Two below, is that, is two below? It's not a part of this, is that correct? That's not a part of this. Right. That's in the town of Mount Pleasant.
Community wants, that's, that's fine. Thank you so much.
Yeah.
All right.
Mr. Pearl, I do have a question.
Yes, sir.
I'm quite curious to Mr. Tisdale, would you please, if you don't mind, answering as to why you would not want to be, I should say, withdraw or not a part of the historic community, sir?
Yes, because our property is under current contract. Over.
Oh, okay, understood, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
I'm sorry. Pearl V. Askew, 977 Gatsenville Road, Owandaw. I just wanted to mention that the other settlement communities here is helping us to represent and push forward this particular process. We had a very good year-long monthly meetings with the town of Mount Pleasant and Charleston County, and we've carved out a lot of things that is good and some is not, and this was part of the recommendation for the Ten Mile community, as Phillips did, to become a part of the historical preservation district, if you will. It just gives us more of a say in what's going on in the African-American settlement community, and not predominantly, I should say, because we do know that we have Robin, who's been there for years and years and years. Thank you so much.
All right, thank you. All right. Okay. Yes, ma'am.
I do have a question for Mr. Tisdale to follow up with Mr. Darby here, because I'm not clear on this. So, Mr. Tisdale, you said that your property is under contract now, but there's no rezoning going on right here?
Right. Okay.
Because you can sell and still have the same zoning. Okay. All right, thanks.
Okay. So this comes before us on...
This will come to our Planning and Public Works Committee on May 19.
Okay, May 19th, it's a comeback to Planning and Public Works. Next one, please.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I would ask, I think planning staff will probably do it anyway, but highlight the gentleman, Mr. Tisdale's parcel on when y'all present that test. Just so we know exactly how it sits with the rest.
Yes, absolutely.
All right, Ms. Pearl, you good? Thank you. All right, next one.
Okay. Charleston County Council will hold a public hearing regarding a request to rezone 3347 Ladson Road from community commercial to general office.
She needs to speak, I guess. Did anybody sign up to speak on this?
Two people signed up. Well, we have one person and then a representative from the school district if y'all want to hear from him.
Okay. The first speaker to come up and name an address...
Margie Longshore.
Karen, you got to make your presentation first, don't you?
Ma'am Speaker, we can make the presentation. I want to make the presentation after they speak. If, but if you want to wait, you can wait and make the presentation first.
I think the presentation is done, and then if anybody wants to comment on it, they speak.
It's probably Karen, but I'll allow that. Let them make the presentation first.
This is a request to rezone, TMS 3900000763347 Ladson Road, from the community commercial zoning district to the general office zoning district. In 1973, the subject parcel was rezoned from the agricultural industrial zoning district to the light industrial zoning district. And then in 2001, a ZLDR update removed that light industrial zoning district, and the subject parcel became community commercial at that time. Here is the location of the subject site when looking at the county as a whole. And here is the future land use designation for this property, which is community commercial shown here in red. So the subject parcel contains a vacant commercial building. Properties to the north across Ladson Road are zone industrial and contain a beauty salon and a single-family dwelling unit. Properties to the west are zone industrial or low-density residential floor and contain single-family dwellings or are undeveloped. The property to the south is zone community commercial and is undeveloped as well, and the property to the east is zone general office and is also undeveloped. Here's an aerial view of the subject site when looking to the north and to the south. And these are photos of the subject property, and then neighboring parcels as well. Here is a comparison between the allowed land uses in the current community commercial zoning district and the proposed general office zoning district. Staff believes the approval criteria has been met, and staff and planning commission both recommend approval. We have not received any public input in support or opposition to this request, and the meeting was noticed as required. Thank you.
Okay. So what are they planning and putting there?
Yeah. So the representative is here to speak on behalf of the school district, but I'm happy to add some commentary. So this is two doors down, or three doors down from Ladson Elementary, which you can see here. So this property is under contract with CCSD, and they're hoping to purchase this property along with the two properties in the middle and rezone them all to general office, since they, the other properties are already general office zoning.
So what are they doing, planning or building school offices there?
The applicant can comment more on the use of the property.
Okay. That's, okay, that's what I kind of thought, because I know you're looking to get from out of downtown, so now they're looking to build offices. Okay. All right. Thank you.
All right, Marjorie Longshore.
I'm Marjorie Longshore with SMHA. Our address is 400 Hibben Street, Mount Pleasant, 29464. I'm the project architect, working on behalf of the school district for the project, and just really was here to answer any questions. I can speak to your question. The school district has purchased the property that's under rezoning request now, as well as the other two adjacent GO-zoned properties beside the school, as they're doing an expansion to Ladson Elementary School. And the current site that holds Ladson Elementary is very, very tight. Parking is an issue. Student drop-off is an issue. Bus parking is an issue, or bus drop-off area. And so the new properties will allow us to provide better access to Ladson Road for the bus and car drop-off areas, as well as provide better facilities for the students as well. So I'm here, happy to answer any further questions, along with our CCSD representative. Thank you.
Mr. Sam, I, I don't know, I might be wrong, but I thought when the school was either building or expansion, they didn't have to have a zoning, a request for school to be built, right? I think it's already allowed.
You, you mean the zoning?
Yeah, so she's saying they're adding on to the school.
Right.
So if they already got zoning, you know, I think when the schools are built, I don't think they have to come and get zoning changed. I could be wrong, but you'd have to research that for me, since I've been there, I've never seen them when they put a school coming and actually rezoning.
Right. I'm not certain. I'm happy to get with the Planning and Zoning Department and verify that.
Yeah, that's, Joel, can you speak to that?
Yeah. It's allowed in the zoning district that they're in. It was at their request for their own accounting, my understanding, that they wanted to have all the same existing zoning on the property.
What I don't want is for them to say they're going to do this and then expand the school and then start putting offices spaces in these, in this neighborhood. So, I mean, if we could somehow add that to the zoning, that, you know, we change the zoning, but it's for expansion of the school and not offices.
Well, it's not a planned development, Mr. Chairman, so I don't think that councils can condition a rezoning through an existing zoning district.
But we can put conditions. Yeah, we'll talk about it. Okay. All right, the next person?
That's it, unless you wanted to hear from the representative from the school district.
If he wants, or he or she wants to come up, that's fine.
My name is BJ Sermer of Charleston County School District. We are hoping to rezone this. One of the efforts is to abandon the property lines. We are, we won't, we do not have any proposed offices going on this site. This additional property that we have purchased allows us to operate the school congruently. When we build, rebuild the new Ladson Elementary School, we don't want to displace those students while we provide them a brand-new school. This property here will allow us to extend the car line, the length, and to everybody's pleasure to get the traffic off of Ladson Road, school traffic. So it is just mainly for our school building and all of our site requirements as far as parking for bus loops and car loops.
Thank you, sir.
So if there's any other questions, I'm happy.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
So, so...
Mr. Evans, it's permitted to do what they want to do now, but for consistency's sake, I think the school district is trying to have all three, one, two, three, four, I guess, parcels, the same zoning, abandon the lines, have one big parcel. That's my understanding. Thank you very much. And the property boundary could get in the way of that.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right. Ms. Pearl?
Mr. Swears, you finished with this item?
Yes, yes.
I would like to ask a question about the Ten Mile Historic District. Was staff planning on making a presentation?
We had one ready for the council if they want.
Okay, I mean, I feel like Ten Mile is here, and normally in a public hearing, the first thing we do is make a presentation, and then we, then we hear from the public. And I feel like we really didn't get, get the presentation.
Okay, if they have a presentation, that's fine.
We're ready.
Am I confused?
They do, but I thought they had already did this presentation.
Normally, the public, normally the public hearing is when we get the presentation, and then in committee, a lot of times, we'll forego the presentation. But in public hearings, the public's here to hear, but also, and also speak.
No problem.
Okay.
This is a request to designate the Ten Mile community as a historic district on the Charleston County Historic Designation List. Just to touch briefly on recent applications in the area, at the May 2 Board of Zoning Appeals meeting, they disapproved a request to remove five grand trees and encroach into two others for a proposed 29-lot subdivision on the properties you can see on the screen there, within the proposed historic district boundary. So this is the location of the subject properties when looking at the county as a whole. Here is the proposed historic district boundary, which spans both sides of Highway 17 North in the Alwindaw area. The Ten Mile community was recognized in the 2016 Charleston County Cultural Resources Survey update as a remnant-Friedman community, having significant social organization and settlement patterns. The Charleston County Comprehensive Plan recommends the majority of the properties in the proposed historic district for urban-suburban cultural community protection, future land use. Some of the properties are located in the Highway 17 North corridor overlay zoning district, Ten Mile neighborhood business service node, and others are recommended for rural residential. Zoning in the proposed historic district is primarily R4 and rural residential, and the properties contain single-family and manufactured homes. Six properties within the proposed district are zone Community Commercial. Eighteen properties are within the Highway 17 North overlay zoning district in the Ten Mile node, and contain single-family homes, manufactured homes, or are undeveloped. Their proposed district also includes four planned developments. The area is surrounded on many sides by development in the town of Mount Pleasant. These areas are zoned either public-institutional, planned development, rural conservation, low-density residential, or medium-density residential, and contain residential development or are undeveloped. The surrounding areas in the unincorporated Charleston County are zoned R4 or MHS or planned development, and contain residential developments or are undeveloped. So here's an aerial view of the proposed district boundary. Next, we have some site photos, first from Robbie Glover Road. These photos are properties off of Beehive Road and 17 North. These show an old storefront and the current community center. Here are some examples of, oh, sorry, here is photos of properties on Chandler Road, as well as off of Highway 17 North. And these are some examples of single-family residences within the proposed district, and also some adjacent new development in the area. Next, I'd like to share a very abbreviated history of the Ten Mile community, which was provided by the applicant. So the Ten Mile community was originally named based on its location approximately 10 miles from the Grace Memorial Bridge, the former bridge that connected Mount Pleasant to downtown Charleston. The majority of the Ten Mile community, specifically the portion south of Highway 17, was formerly the Beehive Plantation. After slavery was abolished in the United States, many of the newly freed slaves settled on Goat Island and Capers Island. And after a major hurricane demolished several areas on those islands, the residents built canoes and crossed the intercoastal to set up residence on the former Beehive Plantation, which is now known as the Ten Mile community. As with most African-American settlement communities, the communities were self-sufficient and relied on the skills of its residents. The families who established the Ten Mile community were hunters, farmers, carpenters, plumbers, seamstresses, cooks, midwives, and entrepreneurs, just to name a few. Christianity was an important aspect to the community. Many of the former and current residents of the Ten Mile community also served in the U.S. military. Both historically and today, many of the African-Americans in the Ten Mile community are homeowners, which is significant when only 40.6% of African-Americans own their homes in the U.S. In the 1930s, the Ten Mile community and other settlement communities created baseball teams, and the Ten Mile Eagles actually played on a baseball diamond on Seafood Road. And the applicant summed it up by stating that the history of the Ten Mile neighborhood has evolved from when African-Americans were enslaved in South Carolina to becoming a community where African-Americans have thrived over time. Thus, the Ten Mile community requests to be designated as a historic preservation district in order to preserve the history of this settlement community for future generations. So here is that Beehive Plantation plot that was referenced earlier. This slide shows a historic tombstone on Lucian Street, as well as the Yellow School House, where many of the children in the community were educated. Many of the residents of the Ten Mile community worship at the Greater Zion AME Church. Although they first congregated in a bush tent, which you can see similarity here, members of the community worked together to acquire land and erected the first church in 1881. So here's a photo of those Ten Mile Eagles, the community baseball team. These before-and-after photos show the disruption that Hurricane Hugo had on the Ten Mile community, which sustained a direct hit from that storm. Here are the approval criteria for historic district designations, and the applicant's response. Both the Historic Preservation Commission and staff recommend approval. This meeting was noticed as required, and 61% of the registered voters within the proposed historic district boundary have signed in support of the application. So prior to the Historic Preservation Commission meeting, a support petition of non-registered voters with 113 signatures, as well as 438 individual support letters, were received. Prior to today's public hearing, four letters in opposition were received. Here is a map showing which properties had registered voters sign in support of the application. Those are shown here in orange. And here is a map showing the four properties that have sent in letters of opposition. So the property owners of TMS 614000060, 061 and 062, shown on the bottom in the three red dots here on the screen, they are requesting to remove their support for the historic district, and also requesting that their properties be removed from the historic district boundary. In addition, one letter in opposition was received from a property owner in Tupelo Forest, which you can also see on this map. Thank you.
All right.
Just a question, are there any historians here on the Ten Mile Hill community? The reason I'm asking, there was a Jewish-American clothier who was part, who was a part owner of what used to be back in the day Sears and Robuck, and Mr. Rosenwall had built over 5,000 schools, primarily for blacks throughout the South. Were there any Rosenwall schools in Ten Mile Hill, and is the building still there?
Yes, yes.
Wow.
Please, if you would, ma'am.
Good evening, Pearl Viascu, 977 Gastonville Road, Alwindaw, 29429. Rosenwall School still resides in the community, I would, outside the community, if you will, meaning that prior to annexation, Whitehall Terrace and where the school resides, the Gregory School resides, was all a part of the Ten Mile community. We have a, one of the residents here today, the young lady, right here, and when you see, it's her parents' home, when you see the photos, the school that's separate from the huge house, that was the first, well, the first grades, we have Mr. Askew, who attended that school right there, the small house right there.
That is the Rosenwall School?
Yes, sir.
Get out of here.
Yes, sir. And I believe we have some other residents here, they may not want to tell their age, so I wouldn't get them to stand, that attended the Gregory School, also known as the Yellow House, but that is the original first grade. Am I correct, young lady? Am I correct, young lady?
This is the first grade.
Yeah.
Wow.
Yes.
I mean, that's a historian's dream. I need to visit there, ma'am. I mean, you're talking to Rosenwall School, that's, it's so very exciting.
It is, it really is. This is why we are trying to just keep it in the family.
Hello, I'm Penny Wakefall, 3560 Highway 17 North, AKA the Yellow House. And my dad is Theodore Wakefall, mom, late mother, Mabel Wakefall. And we've been living there, oh, over 40-something years now, and basically, everything is still there. The little house, as you see, is still there, is still functional. We have some stuff in it right now, but...
Any furnitures in there? Any school furniture, school seats, or whatnot desk?
I haven't been in there in a while, so I'm not sure.
Wow.
But we still have the same flooring and everything like that upstairs in the main house, but everything that you see, the flooring and everything, is still there and functional.
Wow. Thank you, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Just FYI, when Hugo came, that school survived gracefully, from historical information, so our family was privileged to stay at that home to survive Hurricane Hugo, because it was on the opposite side of 17. And it stood, it's test of time. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, Mr. Swears.
Just one question for staff. The Tisdale's property, is that, is that on the map? Is it already highlighted?
Yes, sir. So that is the three properties...
In red?
Yes, sir, at the bottom.
I figured that must be what it is. Okay, we don't need to discuss it tonight, but I just wanted to make sure we highlighted it.
All right, thank you. Go on to the next one.
Can I see that? I saw something say letters in opposition, did I miss that?
Yes, sir. Yeah, so we've received four letters in opposition prior to tonight's public hearing. So those are shown here on the slide in red. So those are three properties owned by the Tisdales, and then one in Tupelo Forest. That's actually within the town of Mount Pleasant, but they sent in an opposition letter.
Other than Mr. Tisdale, is there, what's the rationale in terms of opposition that he's stating?
Yeah, so the opposition letter received from the property owner in Tupelo Forest felt that it was going to impact their property values.
Oh, wow. Thank you.
But they're not in the district.
Oh, okay. Thank you, ma'am.
Sure.
See you in my shop, baby.
Notice is hereby given that Charleston County Council will hold a public hearing regarding the, a request to amend the Kiowa River Development Agreement and Plan Development PD 143B.
All right. So this is a request to amend the Kiowa River Development Agreement and Plan Development to allow for limited and extended short-term rentals on designated properties, and to clarify common open space, Highland acreage. So prior to 2009, the subject property was split-zoned between AG8 and R4. On December of 2009, County Council approved the Kiowa River Plantation Development Agreement. That 25-year agreement included approval of a rezoning of the property from the R4 and AG8 zoning districts to the Plan Development zoning district. The 2009 agreement allowed for a maximum of 1,285 dwelling units, up to 80,000 square feet of leasable space, up to 450 guest rooms, and 635.21 acres of open space. The 2015 Comprehensive Plan Review approved by County Council adjusted the urban growth boundary through the subject property. In 2018, the development agreement was amended. Some of the changes include updating the community name, clarification of internal buffers, amendments addressing saltwater wetland mitigation, and deletion of the special exception requirement for community docs. The development agreement was amended again in 2020. These amendments include, but are not limited to, allowing up to 160 retirement units, exempting sweet gums, laurel oaks, and water oaks from the grant redefinition, and requiring inch-per-inch mitigation when healthy laurel or water oaks are removed, allowing unlimited special events as accessory uses on certain properties, and then also clarification of the sign requirements. Here's the location of the subject properties when looking at the county as a whole. This map shows the future land use designations for the plan development. They include rural agricultural and urban-suburban mixed use. Adjacent properties are zone R4, AG8, AGR, and Plan Development. The subject property is surrounded by vacant parcels and parcels used for agricultural, residential, and institutional purposes. The southwestern portion of the subject property abuts the Kiowa River Estates subdivision. The property to the north of the portion of the subject parcel that touches Betsy Karason Parkway contains a church, and the property to the east of the subject property contains the Charleston County Equestrian Center. The Briars Creek subdivision is located to the east of the subject parcel. Here's the proposed development plan, and the framework plan, and the illustrated master plan. So since the approval of the agreement in 2009, the upgrades to Betsy Karason Parkway have been completed. COs for 42 dwelling units have been issued, and another 60 homes are currently under construction. The reconstruction and extension of Mullet Hall Road to Kiowa River Dry was completed in May of 2021. Agricultural uses continue on the site. Along the waterfront, the trip wall has been completed, and the outfitter building has received its CO. The Spring House Swim and Fitness Center opened under a temporary CO in September of last year. Eleven bungalows are under construction. Staff has also reviewed plans for the hotel and spa, event hall, scullery, and goat dairy, and construction is expected to start on those soon. The sports park is under review by staff currently. Here is an aerial view of the subject properties, as well as some photos of the subject properties. So the requested amendments include clarifying that guest rooms and villas do not constitute short-term rental properties, and that the number of short-term rental properties do not count against the 450 guest room cap. The applicant is proposing to allow limited-home short-term rentals on all properties, and allow extended-home short-term rentals only in the area shown on Exhibit 4.4. All short-term rentals would be subject to the private covenants and restrictions and the proposed short-term rental regulations included as Exhibit 4.3. So the applicant is proposing to add that Exhibit 4.3 to define limited-home rentals, extended-home rentals, and short-term rental tenants, and it also would include requirements based on the county's short-term rental ordinance, which you can see on this slide. They are also proposing to add Exhibit 4.4, which identifies the properties on which extended home rentals would be allowed. And here is Exhibit 4.4, showing the properties that would qualify for extended home rentals up to 144 rental days per calendar year. In addition to the proposed amendments for short-term rentals, the applicant is also hoping to clarify the language regarding common open space to reflect the fact that the OCRM critical line has shifted in some areas of the property since the original wetland survey. So the proposed amendments do not change the amount of common open space that's required. Rather, they state that the amount of Highland acreage versus OCRM critical line acreage included in the common open space calculation may change over time with updated surveys, and that these changes must be accurately reflected on all subdivision plots and site plans. Staff believes the approval criteria have been met. Planning Commission and staff both recommend approval with the following condition: Extended home rental properties shall require special exception approval by the Board of Zoning Appeals pursuant to the requirements of Section 6.8.2.2C of the ZLDR. Six letters in opposition were received prior to the January 10 Planning Commission meeting, and nine additional letters in opposition were received prior to tonight's public hearing. This meeting has been noticed as required. Thank you.
Okay. All right, anybody sign up to speak?
Yes, we have nine people signed up to speak on this. The first person is David Hall, followed by Kirsten Schwatka.
Okay, would you come in that order? State your name and address, I'll give you two minutes.
My name's David Hall, currently building at Kiowa River, 1035 Breaker Lane, 29455. Haven't even moved into the community yet, and as you can see... And as you can see, I mean, things are ever-changing. Understand, with a, you know, a property of this magnitude, but I purchased in that area because of the beauty of the area. I could have easily, with the money I'm spending, gone to Isle of Palms or Sullivan's Island, but it's my retirement home. And I just, I don't want the influx of vacationers and people coming and going. There'll be enough of that with the hotel planned that's underway, you know, cottage rentals, wedding venues. There's enough traffic in and out of that community. And I just want a nice, quiet subdivision where I know my neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Kirsten Schwatka and then Michael Shlawski.
Good afternoon. My name is Kirsten Schwatka. I reside at 329 Landover Road in Columbia, South Carolina. I'm currently under contract on 7900 Flagship Lane in Johns Island in this Kiowa River community. I am in favor of the proposed amendment and support the decision to allow limited short-term rentals on all properties with the limit to 72 rental days per calendar year. My family and I are excited to be purchasing a vacation property for our own enjoyment, and we plan to use it very frequently. However, since it is not our full-time residence, we would like to be able to share our home with letters to experience the beauty of Kiowa River. I read the six letters of opposition from January 2020, and while I emphasize with the concerns of the residents, I believe that many of the concerns are not supported by factual evidence. One specific concern is that short-term rentals would decrease home values. There are numerous studies showing quite the opposite. An article in Housing Policy Debate from 2019 examined the impact of short-term rentals in certain communities and found that the average housing price actually increased and ranges from 0.66% to 2.24% when STRs are located in the community. A second concern I read was a decrease in community cohesiveness and an increase in traffic if people are not full-time residents within the community. The restrictions of 72 calendar days per year is only 10 weeks and less than 20% of the year when a home can be used as a rental. I also believe that this will hardly cause disruption because vacancies will occur through the year if a property manager is not living there, or property owner is not living there full-time and using it as a rental. Lastly, many assume that STRs are rented by rowdy college kids. This is not always the case. And there will be a requirement to use a designated property manager. I believe that is Seawe Properties, and they will help validate every rental booking within the community. The average nightly rate in Kiowa River is about $600 to $800 a night, which is $4,000 to $6,000 a week. The high entry price point will price out collegegoers, and renters will be incentivized to follow the rules and regulations by the property management. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Mike Shlawski. I'm a homeowner at 8040 Jack Island Drive. I am against STR. I have a number of homeowners here, the ones that are against it. Would you please stand up? In addition to that, we have a petition that's floating in the neighborhood right now. Currently, as of today, we have 48 homeowners that have signed up against it with an additional 94 total signees, but 84 that we know are homeowners, and that continues to grow every day. I believe that it will increase traffic in an already crowded Johns Island roads. I also believe it will lower property values long-term. It has an environmental impact on our neighborhood with trash and parking. It's even happening today, even as we speak. Short-term rentals have zero regard for our community. Homeowners have no say or no vote in our current homeowners association. It is entirely run by the Beach Company. If you remember, this was pulled earlier in the year only because the homeowners thought it was a travesty. A survey was sent out. As part of that survey, over 70% of the homeowners, based upon what I saw, were against short-term rentals. We asked for the primary data for that survey and have not received it. Most homeowners have been told multiple things about STRs, from yes, you can, to no, you can't, to only the bungalows, the villas, the butterfly cottages, only up the hill. To me, it seems a wee bit like bait and switch in some respects. Again, this petition is circulating. We intend to submit it before the third reading. It's still growing daily. Many of our owners are here, as you saw. I hope you vote no to STRs because we have homeowners at Kiowa River.
Brian Jordan, followed by Kevin O'Neil.
Hey, I'm Brian Jordan. I live at 1474 Mizan Alley. I'm a homeowner in Kiowa River. And I respectfully request that you deny the request to change the PUD for all the reasons that you've heard so far. And also add some of my thoughts on it as well. First thing, I want to say that, I was going to mark this out, but Seawe Properties is currently the broker who does the property management. And they've already been breaking the rules renting out these houses every weekend when they're not supposed to rent them out short-term in the first place. I have an email that I'm happy to share where they say they've been renting them out for quote-unquote "31 days." And this is the company that we're trusting to enforce short-term rentals up to 72 days max inside of our community. So it doesn't feel well, you know, that right off the bat. I'd also like to point out that there doesn't seem to be any written support that you guys have gotten from any of the homeowners for this request. One of the things developer might talk about is property rights. And developer's stated objective is to change the PUD to allow short-term rentals to protect the property rights of the homeowners. The problem with this is they're ignoring the property rights of homeowners that actually live in the community now, the ones that signed this petition that Mike's talked about and the ones that are here today. You know, what about our property rights? There's a few more things, but with all that being said, I know that we're already at this point and we've missed the zoning and all of that, all those changes. And you guys are maybe likely to go ahead and say, hey, we can't do anything, and we're going to go ahead and approve this. But I would like to say that if you're going to do it, I'd like you to consider that Kiowa River developers make another amendment to their PUD. I have some emails here, but everybody has inside the community, where they have agreed to a seven-day minimum. And they've also, it's not really defined, but other rules and policies. And I would like for you guys to consider that they go ahead and put these in writing in part of the PUD.
Thank you. Next.
O'Neil and then Trenton Walker.
Good evening. My name's Kevin O'Neil, and I work for Kiowa River Investment LLC, the developer of the Kiowa River community. And my address is 320 Broad Street, Charleston. Several homeowners are in attendance tonight, as you can see, and voicing their concerns. We were concerned. We met with the homeowners. We actually pulled our application after Planning Committee meeting in January, met with the homeowners, and conducted a survey to determine their position on short-term rentals. We received 100 responses, and the results of the survey were 24% in favor of short-term rentals in all areas of Kiowa River, 27% in favor of short-term rentals limited to specific areas within Kiowa River, 46% opposed to short-term rentals at Kiowa River, and 3% with no preference. So the community is pretty evenly split, with 51% in favor, 46% opposed. The survey helped gauge community sentiment, but the notion that short-term rentals are a new concept at Kiowa River is challenging. Each purchaser at Kiowa River acknowledges receipt of the governing documents for Kiowa River and agrees to comply with all the terms and conditions. This is a common practice in master plan communities. Governing documents include residential covenants, which state that lots may be used for residential purposes only, including short-term lodging through homestay networks, including but not limited to Airbnb. By amendment, in October 2020, we added to the covenants the designated broker concept in order to ensure quality and standard of experience for short-term rentals. Thank you.
Question, please, sir. Oh, sir? Did you say you engaged the community?
Excuse me?
You engaged the community with STR? I mean, well...
I'm saying that we surveyed the community to determine what their preferences were.
And you said they concurred? What percentage, sir?
A total of 51% were in favor and 46% opposed, with 3% indicating no preference.
51% of the homeowners agreed to allowing STR within the community. That's what you're telling me, sir?
They indicated in the survey that they were in favor of short-term rentals in some form.
All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Next person.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members of council, Trenton Walker, 66 Hazel Street. I'm here on behalf of the owner. I'd like to just put this in context because Kiowa River is in a different category from many of the PUDs. I understand that you've heard from other PUDs who are amending their PD use category to allow short-term rentals. The difference with Kiowa River is there's a development agreement that was entered in 2009 that specifically said that later laws and ordinances don't apply. It was the owner's position that there was a right to have a short-term rental, and we think the owner was legally correct. But we worked with staff and agreed to come forward with a modified proposal that would reduce the right at Kiowa River. I'd also point out that when we did the last amendment, there was a specific change to the request to not allow the retirement housing to have short-term rentals, implicitly acknowledging that they were allowed. But the important thing here is that the owner is not trying to do anything that's different in the rest of the county. All they're asking is for the same right to apply to them that applies in the rest of the county. The only reason it wouldn't be automatic if we didn't have a development agreement was because of the conditions that were put within the short-term rental ordinance that said that if you were in a PD, you had to come in and ask for it. So it's a maximum of 72 days. It's not going to be out of control. The owner is willing to limit it to seven days. And in addition to that, the owner is going to limit the area where the STRs can be applied to the rural village. So it's not this happy-go-lucky, wide rental program that people make it out to be. Thank you very much, and thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Next.
James Barnard Laurie Kristen.
Hello, thank you for having me. My name is James Barnard, 876 Jack Island Drive. I, my family purchased this lot with another good friend and his family from Atlanta. I live here locally in Charleston and love the community and understand all sides of the table here. My family, as well as my friend's family, we purchased this under the understanding that we are going to use it as a family. Sometimes my friend's family was going to use it. Sometimes he's in and out of town here every other week on business, currently rents downtown. So this is going to be a home that he's going to use on a frankly more regular basis than me. But we're also looking forward for potentially using on a short-term rental basis as well, not looking for it to be a full-time, short-term rental thing at all. And like I said, we kind of went into this with the understanding that we are going to have certain rights to go ahead and do that. And we are obviously spending a lot of money. We're going through the process to build the home right now. And I got several young kids. He's getting married right now and looking to do the same. So we hope to be able to use it for a variety of different reasons. And definitely want to respect the place, respect the community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Laurie Kristen, and I am, my home is at 7927 Flagship Lane, and I oppose this short-term rental proposition for a lot of the other, a lot of the other people have said. I also have to add that right now, there is a bill in South Carolina State House that states, and it's, let me find it, I'm skipping around, sorry. House Bill H4547, and this aims to remove short-term rental legislation and regulation from municipalities and place it under the auspices of the state. Any local recourse I may have as a homeowner would be gone. The state wants to usurp every planning commission and county council's authority in this matter and let the state legislate short-term rentals, not this board. When they talk about 51% of the homeowners that approve, you have to understand that's about 100 houses out of a development of over 1,600, 1,200, 1,600 homes. So you're not talking about a great majority. I feel this is a matter that is better left for a later date when there are more homeowners that can be represented and have their wishes known.
Thank you.
And the last person is John Brick.
Good evening, John Brick. My address is 5738 Kiowa River Drive. Retired guy that came down to retire in a nice community. You know, I'm sort of upset that I'm here in the first place because I never thought we'd have to go through this process. But I'm very against STRs. I've lived in Seabrook for decades. I left Seabrook Island, a neighbor, because of the issues there. And if you follow it, it's a war in Seabrook right now between residents and people that rent their homes. And it's going to happen in our neighborhood, too. This was probably the number-one issue at our recent homeowners meeting several weeks ago. I heard no support for it. I understand the survey. The survey was conducted by a real estate agent. Their motivation is different than probably others, and I don't think it was constructed properly. I made a motion to the meeting that we redo the survey. I don't think it's a valid survey. We already have STRs, unbeknownst to some of us. I didn't know they existed here. We're adding 74 more with a hotel. That's going to add capacity issues that we can't maintain, in my opinion. Security, we have one guy at a metal desk at our entrance that's our security person. Facilities, we have limited capacity in our facilities. Our amenities, we have limited capacity. Administrative services, I've lived through this in Seabrook. I don't want to live through it again. And I came here because it was positioned as a community, and I think there was a lot of varied definitions to what that meant. And the question was, were STRs allowed? Clearly, some of us were misled and led to believe that they were not. I'm okay with someone renting a house for 12 months if they want to build on in the community. But short-term renters, my experience, I don't know about you, Mike, in Kiowa, have all been bad experiences. And I'd like to protect my investment. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
Mr. Pryor, I don't mean to be so loquacious tonight, sir, but if I may ask Ms. Hamm if you have any knowledge to this, ma'am. What is your professional and judicious understanding that if council were to vote against this measure in favor of the homeowners, according to the agreement that the gentleman spoke about, would that put council in any type of legal jeopardy?
Mr. Dobby?
No, she can say yes and no. Mr. Pryor, hold on, please, sir. And Ms. Hamm, if you can't answer that question now, please, afterwards, please.
So without having the documents or knowing what the particular covenants are for that particular community, I would not be able to answer that question for you tonight.
Ms. Hamm, that's all, Mr. Pryor. That's all, Mr. Chairman.
We get into a contract, and that could be a contract. Don't matter.
She's asked my question, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
All right, that concludes our public hearing. We're going to take a five-minute break before we move into public comments, and then we'll come back. We're now back in session. So what I'm going to do is, we have some folks that drove all the way from Columbia to come down and make a recognition, so I'm going to move to council agenda for item number three, one, two, and three. Then after that, we'll suspend it and go back to public comments. So what I'm going to do is open our county council meeting by asking Reverend Middleton to give us a prayer, and then I'll ask Ms. Salisbury to lead us in the pledge, and then we will take these on.
Let us pray. Eternal God, we thank you, and we give your name praise, glory, and honor just for this day, another day's journey, another week's journey, and this opportunity to be in this county council experience tonight. We thank you, God, for this council. We thank you for our chairman, and we thank you, God, for his leadership, and we ask, God, that you continue to bless this council as we deliberate over the affairs of the citizens, the things that will affect the citizens of this county. We ask, God, your blessing upon our administrator and those who are in county staff, and we ask that you continue to touch each person who works within county government, so that the service that they provide becomes transformative to those within the county that receives them. And then, God, we ask a special blessing upon those who are on the front lines, to include everybody these days, and we ask, Heavenly Father, that you continue not to allow them to be weary in the things that they do, but allow them to see the greater good of the service that they're giving. And then, God, we ask that you continue to touch us, recognizing that we have wars in other parts of the country, we have famine, we have disease and pestilence, we have all of these things that are plaguing us in this time, so we ask you to unite us and make us strong, so that we would do those things that pushes us toward a more just and blessed society. In your name we pray.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which sustains one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And before we get into the meeting, I'd like to take a moment of silence for the three ladies that were tragically killed on Highway 17 on Saturday night, early Sunday morning, and that's a tragedy, you know, the mother and two daughters, and one of them just graduated from Claflin University on Saturday.
My goodness.
And they were going, coming from dinner, heading back to Collerton County, and unfortunately, you know, was in an accident with one of our deputy sheriffs, so I'd like to take a moment of silence for that family. When you lose three people like that, the mother and two daughters, and, you know, a 22-year-old just graduated.
My goodness.
You know, that's, that's, that's hard to take, so. And so keep the family in prayer, and let's keep our deputies in prayer, those that were injured, because these are trying times. Thank you. So now we move on to item one, Freedom of Information Act.
In compliance with the Freedom of Information Act, notice of meeting was posted and agendas were distributed to news media and persons requesting notification.
Minutes of April 26, 2022, what is the pleasure? That's moved and signed by Mr. Saz. Any discussion, deletions, or addition? All in favor is signified by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, ayes have it. Item 3A is recognitions by FBI of 911 telecommunication. What is the pleasure?
Good, Chairman.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor is signified by saying aye. All opposed, ayes have it. Gentlemen, you can come right on up. Is Mr. Lake here? Come right on up. Whoever you want to bring up, Mr. Lake. I'm in the floor of yours.
Members of council, we thank you for the time and you guys accommodating us this afternoon. I'm Chris Garrett. I'm the supervisor here in Charleston for the FBI. I'm accompanied by Special Agent Steve Jones, and we'd like to take a moment and recognize some of your dedicated employees of the Central Dispatch here. Just by way of background, on the morning of February 1st, 2022, the Charleston Joint Terrorism Task Force was notified by the Charleston County Sheriff's Office of an individual who had contacted Charleston County's Consolidated Dispatch Center, threatening to bomb two historically black colleges in Georgia and Washington, D.C. That same day, the Charleston Terrorism Task Force began to collect relevant information from both the sheriff's office and dispatch. As it turned out, this incident was part of a larger threat issue targeting many HBCUs across the country with multiple subjects, impacting as many as 30 different FBI offices across the country. Because of the quick actions of the two call takers from dispatch, valuable intelligence was gleaned from the unidentified caller, he was, he or she was using a voice decoder or something to block their voice from identification, which was then provided, this information and intelligence was then provided to our New Orleans field office, the lead office, the lead FBI office for this investigation. The FBI in South Carolina would like to formally recognize PST Bianca Anderson and Supervisor Miriam Cucino for their professionalism and ability to build a relationship of trust with the caller, allowing them to collect more information, ultimately contributing to the larger nationwide investigation.
We want to give each one of you a coin from Charleston County, and we want to thank y'all for y'all continued service. 911, you know, sometime takes the rap, it takes the knock, but I know y'all do good service, and we support y'all 1,000% from behind these desks, our diers back here. And Jim, thank you for your leadership. Just want y'all to know that we support y'all 1,000%, and whatever we can do to make y'all job easy, Jim, just feel free to let us know. So now I'll let you have words.
So both Miriam and Bianca are very shy people. I offered to let them speak, but they denied that, so. What you see are two great, not only county employees, but great people, highly trained, highly skilled, and they use that skill every day. This is just another way they've used it to help not only our community, but even nationally. So thank you very much, the FBI. We recommend you.
Yes, yes. Thank y'all, gentlemen, for taking the time out of your busy schedule to recognize us. Thank you so much. All right. Okay, we're now going to suspend our county council meeting and go right into our public comments. Well, how many do we have signed up?
We have 12 people signed up.
So we have 12 people. We give each one two minutes apiece. We ask that you state your name and address when you come, so would you call the first person?
Mike McShane, followed by Mary Edna Frazier.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, council members. I'm Mike McShane, resident of 1501 Ravens Point Road on Johns Island. I'm here both as a citizen of Charleston County, but also in my state role as chairman of the State Conservation Bank, to thank council for your leadership on the green bill applications that you voted on recently. If you think about the significance of what you did, you did what Mr. Darby and others have challenged. You took public access and public benefit and balanced that in that project, which is what we're doing at the state level. You protected a significant vista entering onto one of our sea islands. You protected a significant cultural and historic property right there on Savannah Highway in Rantols with the Sea Island Small Farmers Cooperative. You protected one of the largest undeveloped tracts on Johns Island. And frankly, in my view, and this might not necessarily be well-received by our friends of the city, but you saved the city from itself by the airport, which would have allowed 240 homes to be, to be built where it had a, it had a crash take place less than a year ago. And so, and that's the second time this council's had to do that. You had to do the same on Angel Oak, now you've just done it on Burden Creek. And you gave a buffer to what significantly could be an economic treasure to our community of JZI and not having that type of impact. And so I offered to the council to take pride in the fact that what you did was exactly what I think the citizens of this county were looking to be done, and the state bank enjoyed playing a role in all of those projects, and will continue to do so, and I look forward to that being that type of resource to, in a collaborative fashion, conservation can actually help do economic development, protect those cultural resources as well as our national heritage.
Thank you, too, for taking the lead on that Sea Island Farmers and work with Mr. Nap and them, you know, those folks are up in age, so thank you for, for doing that and working with them to make this happen so quickly, and thanks for all you do.
Well, you're welcome. I enjoy it. Thank you.
Mary Edna Frazier, and then Greg Gouda.
Sure. Chairman and members of the council, I'd like to, I'm an environmental artist. My name is Mary Edna Frazier, and I just had a show at Creek by Creek that had 4,800 people come because of our environment. I live at 1723 Oak Point Road, and I oppose the continuation I live at 1723 Oak Point Road, and I oppose the continuation of eight miles of 526 for $2.35 billion. The proposed highway starts at Folly Road, which is where my house is, on James Island Creek, and then it goes to the heart, through the heart of James Island County Park, the last of their big wooded area, and then it goes through Johns Island's rural areas to West Ashley. It's a political ploy that would disturb valuable wetlands, forested areas, and the rural nature of what we hold dear. With my home, if this was completed, it would further contaminate the waterways. James Island Creek is the dirtiest creek in South Carolina, according to DEHEC. Just think how much more runoff and bad, bad, bad contamination you would be bringing. It would destroy James Island and Johns Island rural nature, which is what we love about where we live. I can't imagine the noise of the highway going over my property from my neighborhood and the acres of trees that would be cut down. The price is just too high. You can't get it back, and overdevelopment is what would follow. There's so many problems in our midst, affordable housing, public green space, things that you owe money on. Listen to the pleas of the people.
Next.
Greg Gouda and Zach Bajor.
Good evening. My name is Greg Gouda. I am a homeowner at 1246 Hollywood Drive in West Ashley, also a local small business owner. I grew up in Charleston and have been hearing limited arguments about the expansion of 526 for my entire life. Didn't make much sense 20, 30 years ago when I was born, doesn't make much sense now. This has been studied for decades by, by the council, by the city, by various local stakeholders, and even by the post and courier, and they've eloquently stated why it's a bad idea, it's a bad deal for your constituents, it's a bad deal for the resilience of our community. The answer is not more roads, it's better infrastructure. Charleston County and the surrounding region is a beautiful place to live with truly special natural wonders and vistas. People love living here because we've done such a good job protecting what makes our homes special. More people are going to continue moving here because this is such a special place, and that's going to bring more traffic, but to deal with that traffic, we don't need new roads, we need new ways to get cars off of the roads. We must offer our residents and visitors viable and competitive means of transportation and commuting that are more enjoyable, convenient, and affordable than sitting in traffic in our cars. Rapid transit buses, ferries, bikes, pedestrian corridors, light rail and proactive planning and enhancing existing roadways and intersections can solve many of these problems at a wider scale and at a comparable cost to the proposed extension. Why choose a highly controversial and fiscally risky mega project that will be limited in positive constituent impact and obsolete on completion when you could instead create scores of popular and widespread infrastructure, livability, and environmental improvements across every corner of the county? The answer is clear: build a better Charleston County, not a flawed 526. Thank you.
Thank you.
Zach Bajor, and then Belvin Oligar.
My name is Zach Bier. I live at 359 Howell Avenue on James Island. I'm also here to oppose the plans to extend 526. I think the most common sense reason to oppose this is that the cost continues to inflate with each new estimate. The engineering costs alone are reaching $150 million, and I think that money like that could be put to use on plenty of other shovel-ready projects that would improve traffic flow and improve quality of life for Charleston County residents. I think ultimately this is a quality of life issue, and I think that if we are trying to improve quality of life, let's not dismantle quality of life in search for better quality of life. And I know I've said quality of life a lot now, but I live right there on Maybank Highway, and I have to drive in that traffic all the time, and the studies have shown that the improvements to traffic will pretty much only be right there for me. But even with that being said, I use James Island County Park all the time. To ruin that park in the name of a highway extension is just untenable, and I do not support the exception. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Belvin Oligar, and then Pat Welsh.
Hey, Belvin Olisov, Fort Wade Race Street.
You can pull that up. No, just flip it, the, the black part, the mic itself, just push it out.
Of course. Hey, Belvin Olisov, I live in Fort Wade Race Street. I'm the co-founder of the Charleston Climate Coalition. I was hardened by the passage of the Charleston County Climate Action Resolution last year, establishing the reality and threat of the climate crisis and calling for a community-based, integrated climate action plan. One of the most important things we can be doing right now as a county is evaluating every decision that we make under climate considerations, like, will this be resilient or adaptable to the rising sea levels that we'll be seeing in 10, 20, 50 years? Will this project worsen the climate crisis by driving up energy and fuel use, or will it help to mitigate it by reducing energy impact? It's my view that the I-526 extension project does not stand up to these basic questions. Study after study has shown that expanding and extending highways does not improve traffic. It may be counterintuitive, but thanks to induced demand, you'll simply be putting more cars on the road, travel time unchanged. The last thing that we need is an increase in the county's vehicle miles traveled, burning more fossil fuels, for no real benefit to commuters. The price tag for eight miles of I-526 extension is, at last count, $2.35 billion. That much money could be revolutionary if we put it towards public transportation and meaningful walk-bike infrastructure. By one count, $1.3 billion would mean 93.5 miles of bus rapid transit. Why aren't we moving towards that instead of sinking more and more funds in what is, pardon my French, a boondoggle of a project? And with the I-526 project running through low-lying James Island areas and funneling more traffic to Calhoun Street and the Medical District, to pursue this would be making a losing bet against flooding and sea level rise. Facing an intensifying climate crisis, we need to focus on fleet-footed, dynamic, and mass transit-centric projects to improve mobility. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Pat Welsh, and then Todd French.
Pat Cutten-Make it tonight. My name is Elizabeth Fox. I live at 2521 Bullet Guard Drive on Johns Island. I'm a resident of the Stono View neighborhood. I have traveled here and taken time away from my very young family to let you know that we do not want 526 to be completed. It would be detrimental to our community. Other promised road improvement projects, which have been delayed because of 526, should be completed instead. In addition, the expected cost of the 526 project is exorbitant, not to mention that the environmental impact will be horrific. My young family lives where we do because we love the Stono River views, not the 526 traffic views. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Todd French, and then Becky Van Wee.
Hello, my name is Todd Freck. I'm a resident of Johns Island, 169 Winding River Road. I'm here to talk to you about something a little bit different tonight, and that's the Burger King at the corner of Main Road and Savannah Highway. As many of you have noticed, if you've driven past it, it's been abandoned by the restaurant corporation that was running it. It's owned by Burger King, it's covered in graffiti, there are abandoned vehicles in the parking lot. I understand from talking to staff at the county that there's not a lot that can be done about that yet. Natalie has provided me with the name of the attorneys that are representing Burger King in the bankruptcy, and I've contacted them. I am here to ask for council's assistance tonight to get some movement on encouraging Burger King to straightening out that property. As you've noticed in West Ashley, our property, our community is starting to see a rise in drug violence in that area. You'll see on the documents that I sent over to you via email last night, I pulled some of the Charleston County Police Department statistics, we're starting to see a lot more drug violence in our community, which was not the case a year ago. What I'd like to do is to get that property cleaned up, and I think if we do clean up the property and we make it clear to people that that's not the type of thing that we want in our community, we can eliminate some of the problems that are starting to happen in that community, and I'll be reaching out to you individually to see what we can do to get that to happen. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Can I ask one question?
Yes, Ms. Johnson.
Yes, Mr. Fox.
Speaking of the mic.
Sir, when you say you want us, the county, to clean it up, are you talking about the grass, overgrown grass and bushes and stuff? Because we have done quite a bit of cleaning up over there.
Yes, we have.
So, so what cleanup are you talking about?
What, what I want is for the council and for our county government to start putting more pressure on Burger King to take care of that property. It is a nuisance, it's got trash on it right now, it's got abandoned property on it. I understand that there's a lot, not a lot that we can do from a regulatory perspective because it's private property, but I think there's a lot that we can do as a community and council to go to Burger King and say, we're not having that in our community, you can clean it up, or we can condemn it, and we'll clean it up for you, and then we can use it as a nice park.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Becky Van Wee. I live at 270 North Shellmore Boulevard in Mount Pleasant. Mr. Sasse, I am in your district. I'm a member of Circular Congregational Church and the Charleston Area Justice Ministry, and I'm here to speak tonight in support of affordable housing. We were very pleased to hear that the county council will once again put forth a referendum to support affordable housing. We are concerned, however, that there are a number of unanswered questions related to this referendum, and I'm here to encourage council to ensure that the answers to these questions are resolved before the referendum, because it would stand in the way of people's willingness to go to the polls. The questions that we're aware of, will the referendum funds be used toward an affordable housing trust fund so that taxpayer dollars can be leveraged and multiplied to permit more affordable housing? Will the referendum funds be used for those in the community with the greatest need for affordable housing, so that they can access more, so that more of them can access housing? These are the folks that have the least number of homes available at a price point they can affor, can, excuse me, afford. Will county council show its own commitment toward affordable housing by allocating $10 million now, either from ARPA funds or from the budget, so that the community can see forward momentum before this referendum occurs? A large portion of the community stands ready to help with this referendum, to have a positive vote. We just ask that the county remove any unnecessary obstacles. While we can't see the future, you can at least imagine the blessing it will be to families to move into housing they can afford. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Suzanne Rutledge, and then Justin Schwabler.
Mr. Chairman, where will we get a copy of these questions, sir?
She can leave it with the clerk.
Oh, you did, okay, thank you, ma'am.
Hi, I'm Suzanne Rutledge, and I'm here to read a short statement from Jim Coyne, who is the partner and general manager of the Harbor Club at West Edge. Dear Charleston County Council, the Harbor Club has a 25-plus-year history in Charleston. As with all downtown Charleston area, we are struggling to find employees. Most of our line employees live in North Charleston and Somerville because they cannot afford to rent anywhere near the downtown area. We then lose those employees when they are tired of the commute or find employment closer to where they live. It is vital that a solution is implemented so hourly employees can afford to live near the peninsula. Thank you.
Thank you. We get it.
Good evening again, council. I'm Justin Schwabler with Historic Charleston Foundation, just here in support of my friend George Richardson and other members of the Bee Field community for the establishment of the Bee Field Historic District, and we hope that council continues your support. Thank you.
Thank you.
And the last person is George Richardson.
Good evening. I didn't realize that I'd been sitting so long. It's a pleasure to be before you all again, Chairman, council members, and all the ladies and gentlemen. I've been coming here for a while now, I feel a little bit comfortable, but to tell you the truth, I'm kind of ready to see this journey come to an end, so with this second reading, I'm hoping and praying that it will bring us one step closer to our final reading. I reside at 1804 Battery Island Drive, that's on James Island, and I want to say this, we're also known as the Bee Field community, and I have to say that tonight because I was sitting here having a few words with Thomas Tisdale, and come to find out, he knows me as the president of Battery Island Drive Neighborhood Association, and I said Bee Field, and then finally it clicked, it's like, wow, we, we talk about, and he works with me, and he still is working with me as far as getting some things done in our community. I want to say that I'm so much looking forward to us being designated, and, and not only just for us, but I, I was hoping that some of 10 Mile was still here, because when they stood and talked about the sweet grass, and that's a direct connection with my community because they come over to Bee Field where they get that grass, that they take back over there and make their baskets. So I would support them so that they, and hopefully we can, they're the same, so that they'll have an area that they still can come, collect the grass, and make their business grow. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that's it. All right, we're now going to reestablish our county council reading, we're going to go to item number four, A and B, Ms. Salisbury, third reading.
An ordinance finding that Charleston County Park and Recreation District may issue not exceeding $8 million general obligation bonds in one or more series to authorize Charleston County Park and Recreation District to issue such bonds and to provide for the publication of the notice of the said finding and authorization. Mr. Darby?
Aye.
Mrs. Honeycutt?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Middleton?
Aye.
Mr. Moody?
Aye.
Mr. Sasse?
Aye.
Mr. Schwers?
Aye.
Mr. Werman?
Aye.
Mr. Pryor?
Aye.
Ordinance passes third reading with nine ayes. And then we have an ordinance amending the Charleston County Procurement Ordinance as amended, Division One General, Division Two Organization, Division Three Source Selection and Contract Formation, Division Five Construction Architect Engineering and Land Surveying Services, Division Eight Intergovernmental Relations, Division Nine Small Business Enterprise SBE Program, and Division Eleven Local Preference Option as amended. Mr. Darby?
Aye.
Mrs. Honeycutt?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Middleton?
Aye.
Mr. Moody?
Aye.
Mr. Sasse?
Aye.
Mr. Schwers?
Aye.
Mr. Pryor?
Aye.
Ordinance passes third reading with nine ayes.
Item five, A is Bee Field Community Historic District Designation, Ms. Salisbury.
An ordinance designating the Bee Field Community located in the James Island area of unincorporated Charleston County as a historic district on the Charleston County Historic Designation List. Mr. Darby?
Aye.
Mrs. Honeycutt?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Middleton?
Aye.
Mr. Moody?
Aye.
Mr. Sasse?
Aye.
Mr. Schwers?
Aye.
Mr. Werman?
Aye.
Mr. Pryor?
Aye.
The ordinance passes second reading with nine ayes.
Okay. All right, now we move to item six, A, we're going to take because that requires an ordinance reading. Ms. Salisbury, well, what is the, yeah, what is the, pleasure, council? Who for committee recommendation? Okay. Is there a second? Okay, second by Ms. Johnson. Any discussion? All in favor is signified by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed? One aye. Okay, Ms. Salisbury, read, ordinance.
Yes, sir. An ordinance to dissolve the Allendale Consolidated Fire District Advisory Board and other matters related thereto.
Okay. Item six B through six F, what is the pledge? To approve. Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Johnson. Discussion. Mr. Moody?
Thank you, sir. Just confirming, six B, Mr. Darby, we, we're going to plan on having Mrs. Durant and team develop a program for us. We're, we're just allocating the money and waiting for her to bring forward a program with some guidelines to deploy those funds.
Just confirming six B, Mister Darby, we're going to plan on having Mrs. Durant and team develop a program for us. We're, we're just allocating the money and waiting for her to bring forward a program with some guidelines to deploy those funds. Is that everybody's understanding?
Mm-hmm.
Yes, sir.
That's, you're good?
Yes, sir, thank you.
All right. Anybody else? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, ayes have it. We're now going to move to council comment. Reverend Middleton. Mister Schwers? Mister Darby?
This meeting has been so long, Mister Chairman, that when I came here, I didn't need to show you.
Wait till next time.
That's it, that's my comment, sir.
Mrs. Honeycutt?
Nothing.
Ms. Johnson?
No, sir.